Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 6th Board of Supervisors' regular meeting, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, unless anybody has any amendments.
Motion to have a second? There's no change, so I'll second that motion. We have a motion on second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, going into presentations. Dr. Grimsley?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's another beautiful day in Rappahannock County. We are thrilled to share several exciting highlights from the past month as we continue our commitment to excellence at our CPS. Homecoming 2025 was truly unforgettable. The weekend kicked off with an electrifying Friday night football game, highlighted by incredible performances from our sideline cheer team and talented marching band. We were very excited to bring home the win in that game. The excitement continued at the Vegas-themed Homecoming Dance, where students enjoyed nonstop dancing, thrilling card games, and a fantastic Elvis impersonator performance by our very own Ms. Erin Platt. It was a night filled with a lot of fun, laughter, and memories that will last a lifetime. The peer-mentor reveal party happened on September 24th, and that was a tremendous success. Excited 8th grade students rushed into the gymnasium to find their 11th or 12th grade peer mentors, welcoming them to their groups. After pairing up, the mentors and mentees had a blast playing games and building relationships through team-building experiences. These groups will meet monthly throughout the year, fostering meaningful connections across all of the grade levels. A very special thank you goes out to the Rappahannock PTO for their generous support in funding our new Gaga ball pit at the RCES school playground area. It's been so popular, in fact, that I hear that they may want to do another one, so the kids are lining up to play. During our recent Staff Professional Development Day, teachers and administrators participated in breakout sessions led by RCPs educators who have completed extensive training through the Center for Inspired Teaching. At the high school level, Sally Shackelford, Creighton Long, and Lauren Williams facilitated workshops on topics such as using observation and reflection to deepen relationships, building community with daily check-ins, and using questions to build relationships. At the elementary school, Amy Grady, Amy Wenzel, and Jennifer Deal led sessions including using student profiles to build trust and engagement, seek and find and be found, and engaging learners through games. We are grateful to the Center for Inspired Teaching for their continued collaboration and to the REACH Initiative for funding this meaningful partnership. In the realm of career exploration, we launched our first Trade of the Month program with Joey Snyder, who shared his journey as a plumber and offered students practical guidance on pursuing this rewarding profession. We were also honored to have Mr. Larry Grove, Mike Wanger, and Frank Rader from the Rappahannock County Lions Club in attendance, who spoke to students about the generous financial support that they receive if they are pursuing certifications through the trade programs. Ms. Burgess's introduction to Hospitality and Tourism class had an exciting opportunity to visit the White Moose Inn in Little Washington. Students toured the entire property, including the main house, guest cottages, back-of-house areas, and guest commons, gaining valuable insight into exciting career paths in the hospitality and tourism career cluster. Her 8th grade Career Exploration class also took a tour of Sperryville businesses on October 1st to learn directly from the business owners and employees. Students asked thoughtful questions about valuable high school courses, resume-building opportunities, daily operations, and more. In academic achievements, we are incredibly proud to recognize Mason Comer for being named a commended student in the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program. Mason had demonstrated exceptional academic promise through his outstanding performance on the PSAT and MSQT. Congratulations also in that realm to Isabel Robey on earning 4th place in Small Engine Repair Competition at the Northern Area FFA Conference in her very first competition. And a very special thank you to Mr. Chris King for his outstanding coaching. This week, the Virginia Department of Education released the 2024-2025 School Performance Framework scores, and we are pleased to share that RCPs ranked as on track, with the high school less than one point away from the distinguished designation, which is still under debate. We're kind of thinking we can get that .35 that we're really close to. So that's just a testament to the hard work of our students, dedicated staff, and supportive families. This achievement reflects our ongoing commitment to academic excellence and continuous improvement. We're going to talk a lot more about that at our school board meeting next week, in-depth about the framework and all the changes that are going into that, and also some more changes that are coming from VDOE as we speak, so we'll be talking about those. We have several exciting events on the horizon this month. It is Bullying Prevention Month, and our school psychologist, Kathy Zare Rhodes, has planned activities throughout the month for teachers and students to participate in and raise awareness of the impacts of bullying and on the well-being and mental health of our students. And be sure to tune into the Soup Scoop, our new RCPs podcast available on our hot topics page. As always, we deeply appreciate the support from the board and the community. The support helps enable us to continue to provide remarkable opportunities for all our students in addressing the critical needs of our families, so thank you so much. Do you have any questions for me?
I've got just two things related to career development. More questions, and you don't have to answer right now. Number one, I recall that Daniel Garcia shadowed me as a local elected official a couple of summers ago, and I wasn't sure, I don't recall the name of that program. We had a great time, and I benefited from it, and I know he did, and I just wonder if that program, aside from what you've just described, where students were visiting businesses, if that career professional mentoring program still exists and in what form? And then the second thing, I saw in the Rappahannock News sort of randomly, maybe four or five months ago, a little blurb that said if you have an advanced degree, a master's degree, or higher, to let us know, and let us know, you know, sort of the area in which you're educated. And I was just curious, I understood from the blurb in the paper that the idea was to have guest lecturers at the schools, and I did respond to that, but have never heard anything, and I was just curious if that program is ongoing and what its status might be, because we're fortunate in this community to have some pretty interesting characters, to say the least.
Very much, yes.
And it's, yeah, if nothing else, this is a county full of characters and some very, very-
Love it, character.
Yeah, absolutely, with some incredible professional accomplishments and educational background, and I just hope, when I saw that, I was excited that maybe the school system was taking advantage of the people who are here in our community to bolster instructional material and approach to instruction, so I'd just be curious to find out where that all stands.
Sure, and I will double-check on the master's inquiry. That was a canvas that was done by both the POG team and the high school to see what opportunities, if there are any, to have adjunct professor-type guest lectures or courses. So I know they were developing a repository for that, especially around the high-quality work-based learning regulations that are coming out. Those have been delayed quite a bit at the state level, and we're finally getting a lot more information, so hopefully we can roll out a lot of those opportunities soon. We will need folks like Daniel, who did job shadow you and career shadowing internships, even externships and projects coming up. There will be a lot more about that soon, because now schools are going to require those pieces to be part of the educational experience, I mean, as they should be. They're pretty extensive. However, in areas like Rappahannock, we do have to do quite a bit more digging and try to get those volunteers, and we don't have a huge amount of business and industry that our students can participate in to meet those requirements. So trying to figure out the flexibilities with the state with that. The Pathways Academy, for which you're referring to, we hope to continue that every year. That is a partnership with the RCPs and RAPC, where students go through a two-week program. The mentorship goes a little bit longer than that, and even the advising with those students, that the kids have an advisor. They learn a lot of valuable life skills and post-secondary options, have support from professionals in the area that they're interested in, and I know that Daniel had a great time in that program. We just saw him recently at the Homecoming event, where he came back as an alumni to play in the band, so he's doing really well.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Bus Ridership Week. I know it's this month.
It is.
Is it, when is it again? Is it this week?
The week is the 21st.
Okay. You usually stay for the whole meeting, so I feel silly asking. You are going to stay so we can talk more about buses later?
I wouldn't miss it.
Good, me too. We never get tired of talking about buses.
Did you say you wouldn't miss it?
Wouldn't miss it for the world. It's one of my favorites. You know that.
Great, thank you. We can save that for later.
And I mentioned to you, I think it was last month, I was interested in, because of some of the reporting I've seen that you specifically have to do, how much of the reporting that a larger school versus a smaller school is required to do, state and federal, and how many of your staff currently in the schools are doing multiple roles because of some of that administrative, like-
Okay, so federal and state requirement reporting, so state reports, the applications, the funding, the reimbursements, we have the same amount of reporting that allowed in our Fairfax Wood, no matter the number. So it's different inputting, but it's the same reports that are required. If, I think I brought it. So I have the, what this is called the Educational Registry of Applications for Virginia Department of Ed. I'm happy to leave this if you wanted to look at it, but it's four pages, very, very tiny print, of all the reports that we have to do, and the same few names are on it of all of us that have to make sure that we complete those on time. Now, some of them are just simple, I'd say simple, but you have to know the program, go in, have all the information, make sure you understand each of the pieces, and fill out a report. Many of them, though, require, I'll pick one out of here, like the Title II. I do that one. So Title II is staff development. We get about $30,000 per year for that. It's a year-long process for each application, just the application. You have to have meaningful dialogue with all the private schools to ensure that you're meeting the set-aside amount. You have to have reporting on staff development. Your needs assessments have to be done. Then you put in the application. If I want to make just a little change to that, then I have to do an amendment to the application, and any expenditure out of that account that we do, I go in, I put in the reimbursement, what it was for. So-and-so went to a conference on this date in Richmond, cost this much, this is how much their breakfast was, this is based on the GA, so I do that just for Title II. So, I mean, each one of us administrators has a chunk of those that we're responsible for, and there, some of them are like special education. I mean, that one has so many pieces to it, compliance pieces, that you have to make sure you're on, just before you lose funding if you're not compliant with those, but you can get in a lot of trouble. That's the Office of Civil Rights, so each one of our administrators does have those parceled out on top of their regular job description.
How does that affect, or does it affect morale with having the multiple layers of requirements that people are, your administrators, or even in the school system itself, or having to-
Feedback has been mixed on that, because at the one point, you're trying to cross-train as much as you can, but then when you do have a vacancy, like in my office or an administrative support role, if we don't have enough cross-training, it's who has the capability or bandwidth to be able to pick that up? And we're kind of running out of people that have enough bandwidth to pick that up. And the other factor is how much can you compensate for that doesn't put that out of whack with surrounding districts for a similar job description? But, I mean, it's sort of a, people know that if you come here, we're going to compensate you as best we can, but you just have to be ready to roll up your sleeves and take on whatever you can. That's just the small district way, you know, so, but it can impact that. The workload is extensive. I have lost people for that reason and say, look, I can make a lot more over, I have to drive 40 minutes and I'm only doing one job. We hear that all the time, yeah.
Well, thank you for that. All right. I think we're good. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair-
Yes.
Potentially adjust the agenda to Mr. Jenkins's recognition to now.
I would make a motion that we adjust the agenda at this time to move up the recognition for Roger Jenkins for his retirement, and that we just insert that in the agenda now and come back to the additional presentation after that's concluded.
I'll second.
Excellent. We have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
He is retired after all. You don't have any time to waste.
So if I could do a motion to adopt the resolution?
Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
Second.
You have a motion on second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed.
I'm trying to catch up.
Okay.
I did.
Christine and Ben, you seconded, right?
It was so fast, I didn't have a chance to write it down.
I seconded.
Oh, you seconded?
I thought I'd seconded right off the bat, actually. It doesn't matter.
But we have a second.
There's two.
There's two.
Yeah.
There's two. There were two motions.
Please, please.
Move the agenda, and then you adopt the resolution. Thank you.
Resolution of appreciation and commendation from the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors to Major Roger L. Jenkins, retired, for his service to Rappahannock County. Whereas Roger L. Jenkins retired from public service to the citizens of Rappahannock County on August 1st, 2025, and whereas Mr. Jenkins began his employment within the county on February 1996, first-serving Sheriff Gary T. Suttle and the citizens of Rappahannock County as jailer, and soon thereafter as patrol deputy within the Rappahannock County Sheriff's Office, and whereas in 2019, Mr. Jenkins was promoted by Sheriff Commie S. Compton to serve as major and chief deputy overseeing the deputy's day-to-day scheduling, training, and operations. And whereas during his employment with the county, Mr. Jenkins was exceedingly dedicated, loyal, and dependable, constantly serving others with the utmost professionalism and extra effort. And whereas the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors will always consider Mr. Jenkins a colleague and friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors hereby express their appreciation of and commendation to Major Roger L. Jenkins, retired, for his long and distinguished service, and wish him good health and thus with his career in the department. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant adopted this 6th day of October 2025.
So, thank you.
Hey, Roger. Congratulations.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, and congratulations.
We know where to find you.
That's right.
All right, now we're back into presentations. We have the CFO, Stephen Roddy of REC.
To be introduced by-
To be introduced.
You get me first?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lindsay Watson. I'm the Director of Government Affairs at Rappahannock Electric Co-op. I've met most of you before, so it's good to see you again. We do have Stephen Roddy here. He is our Chief Financial Officer, and once I've gone over the things at the beginning, he'll do a deeper dive into some of the details. We can go to the next slide. All right, I will not bore you with all of the statistics, but it's important to know that we serve all or parts of 22 counties, from the West Virginia State Line all the way down across Hanover, which is just north of Richmond, and over onto the Middle Peninsula. So we have a very diverse service territory.
One might be a map.
Yep.
The next one is a map.
Oh, yes. So, we have 18,000 miles of line, which makes us the second-largest co-op in the country, if you measure it. There's many ways to measure a co-op, but that's a pretty significant statistic. We have over 180,000 member accounts now, and we're growing pretty quickly with our traditional load of residential and small-business customers, and we have 820 miles of backbone fiber. Go to the next slide. And in the blue here is our service territory. As you can see, it's right in the middle of DC, Richmond, Charlottesville. It crosses Interstate 66, 64, 95, and 81, so we are right where a lot of people are wanting to build businesses or move to, especially since the pandemic. You can go to the next one. So as I'm sure you all have heard, data center power is dominating our demand growth, and REC service territory is in the exact geographic location where a lot of those data centers want to locate, especially as land sort of runs out in northern Virginia and the prices go up so substantially. So we have seen a lot of data center interest. We have been working with a lot of them on sites and things like that, and it's important to us that if the county wants that sort of development, that we are supportive. If they don't, obviously, you know, we are not going to support that. We're just here to support businesses that want to locate, because we do have a duty to serve, obligation, and we want to work with each individual community on what they want for their community. And you can go to the next slide. So as we saw so much interest from data centers and looking at the very large load size that comes with those, we started to think about financial protections and how best to protect our traditional members, again, being residential and small business. So at Rappahannock, we came up with the idea of a bill that would allow cooperatives to fulfill their obligation to serve through a fully-owned subsidiary. Currently, that is already a protection that the investor-owned utilities have. It was just something that was missing from the cooperative part of the statute. So we did work with Delegate Sickles and Senator Deeds on that bill, and it was passed unanimously. And essentially, it's a permissive language, so it's not something co-ops have to do, but if they think that's the best for their business model, then that is a protection that they can use, and it just allows for the co-op to sort of separate out the financial risk that would be associated with a very large load, whether that company goes bankrupt, has wants to dispute a bill, has a problem paying their bill. It protects the rest of the members from that financial risk. We did get support from the EDP and Dominion on the bill, and then it was signed into law by Governor Youngkin and took effect on July the 1st. So we're very happy with that. And then I will call Stephen up to go over the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Ms. Watson said, thank you for having us here today to speak on this topic and look forward to answering any questions you may have after I finish. But as Ms. Watson also said, that one of the challenges we face is the Rappahannock Electric Cooperative max capacity for what I call our native membership of over 180,000 meters is roughly about 1,150 megawatts. Currently, if you look at the chart, you will see that there's requests associated with data centers. This does not mean the law materializes, but there are requests for approximately 20,000 megawatts of data centers here in the footprint of Rappahannock Electric. And so just to kind of give you a scope, right, that is larger than almost twice the size of New York City is what you're looking at when you look at 20,000 megawatts. That's how much energy you're talking about consuming. One of the things that Rappahannock Electric kind of stepped back and did was we said, how do we protect our membership? And we did that through a formation of an affiliate called HyperScale Energy Services. What this allows us to do is allows us to be a sleeve to the market. In other words, our native membership is still served by our wholesale power agreement by ODEC Electric Cooperative. And so therefore, our load for our normal 180,000-plus meters is the same folks who've always done it, and we have a long-term agreement with them through the year 2075. So they will continue to support that. However, the data centers will be sleeved directly to PJM, which is actually a regional transmission organization, which basically covers some and parts of 13 different states. What they do is they basically pull all the assets inside of that and basically meet the demand of everyone inside of that large sphere of 13-plus states with the same balance of assets that are inside of it to manage that. And so one of the things that HyperScale Energy Services has done is it's a wholesale affiliate, so therefore we've removed it from being straight directly underneath Rappahannock Electric. And so when these large data centers approach us, we utilize the affiliate to construct the business. We ensure that they understand how we will serve the power to them, how we will get them their supply through the construction of a large-scale transformer and will be set inside of a substation. That substation's what's called a direct-serve facility, so therefore it does not serve other members within a cooperative. It will directly serve that one member, that one large load, and the largest you can, based on Dominion infrastructure, is 300 megawatts. So we do that through hyperscale, and we basically do all the management of the organization through this HyperScale Energy affiliate as well. We do it through something called Operating Services Agreement. Basically, that's an agreement between Rappahannock Electric Cooperative and all of its affiliates on how we will conduct business at an arm's length. In other words, it provides the governance, it's approved by the commission, and it tells us basically how we conduct business, anything from establishing the agreement all the way through billing the customer and recovering that cost, and how we can bring it back to Rappahannock Electric to serve our members. The process is pretty simple. We work with the member to get the electric infrastructure and make sure that we basically have the funds upfront. It's prepaid through something called Contribution and Aid to Construction, and what they do is they basically prepay for the assets to build that large substation that will directly serve them. So therefore, the members are not at risk if they were to abandon, or they were to say, I want more. We would settle up and basically say, this is the financial value you've increased or decreased, and we will settle up with them at that point. So therefore, our membership is not having to pay for any risk associated with building the supply lines to that individual data center. And then we basically, we procure the power in PJM, as I stated, and then we serve it. We basically wholesale it over to Rappahannock Electric. Rappahannock Electric serves it through a distribution to that member. So that's how Rappahannock is involved with that. So the government agreements, we do three different government agreements. We have the Construction Development Agreement, which is the upfront agreement that basically says, here's how we will construct your facility, here's how much it will cost, and here's how we will manage it throughout the process. And we give them an in-service date, and we work together to get that, obviously, and work with Dominion as well for bulk transmission. And then we turn around and we do what's called an energy supply agreement. That's actually a delivery of the power itself. That's the actual distribution system that we're putting in from the substation to the actual members' electric meters. And then we have the last thing, which is called the Power Supply Agreement, which is the agreement of how we will charge them for the power we're purchasing from PJM to move along those lines that we have. So it's made in three different parts. The last thing I want to talk a little bit about is the actual tariff in which we've created, which is currently in front of the commission for approval, on how we will charge these large-scale members. And one of the things to keep in mind about a large-scale member, a large-scale member has to be over 25 megawatts, 75% capacity factor, which means has to be above 25 megawatts 75% of the time it's on. And then on top of that, it's also called, it's called Large Power Dedicated Facilities. As I said, they're actually paying for their substation, which removes it kind of from our distribution lines, from our normal historic distribution system, and gives them a direct path. So it's served by one facility, so it's a one-to-one relationship. So therefore, that is what also signals it out versus what we would do versus a normal large industrial load that would locate in our area. The way this actually works is basically it's based on installed capacity, not on demand. Most of the time, like for example, at your house, you would actually, you know, the demand you use is how you pay your electric bill. There, it's based on installed capacity. So that 300 megawatts I just referenced, we're billing them for every megawatt of that, regardless if they use 25 of it or all 300 of it. So therefore, it allows them to pay for that facility and pay for the maintenance associated with that facility directly through their billing process. It is also, any redundant capacity, so for example, each station will have the amount of capacity to serve, but also a secondary capacity to ensure in case an event where a transformer or some type of event occurred where they lost power, they could switch power to an alternate source and have that power still. And then the last part of that would be the recovery of O&amp;M expenses. So the upkeep of those facilities will be covered by them as well. So that's also built into this LPDF tariff that, again, is currently with the commission for review. One of the challenges that, you know, we talk a lot about is how many megawatts. I mean, we see the numbers. We see how large the numbers are, but one of the things we're also focused on is helping them identify where the power comes from. So we are act participant in PJM, we're act participant at the state level to continue to talk about needing the generation in the megawatts to support not just these large loads, but- loads, but everyday loads and keep costs as effective and as low as possible and keep it affordable for everyone.
Mr. Rowdy, thank you very much for um uh coming here. I know when um when John Hua came and talked to us, I was immediately impressed that we get to hear directly from top executives at REC. Um I've got a few questions for you and um your your business acumen is certainly better than mine, so you'll have to bear with me if some of these are naive questions. Before I do that, though, I want, I hope you'll take a message back to Mr. Hua that you've got two superstars here sitting behind you. Lindsay has been awesome and we actually have never met, but we've talked on the phone. She does a great job and Jeff Henry, we sing his praises at almost every board meeting. So we uh we really like your team a lot and hope you all recognize how how great they are. This uh this, I guess I want to understand um whether we're talking about um for uh for data center supply, if we're talking about an affiliate or a subsidiary, would this be an affiliate of REC or a wholly owned subsidiary? And that relates to my second question, to the extent that the affiliate or subsidiary maintains its own um financial statement and income statement, to what extent are the financials of that affiliate or subsidiary consolidated in REC? And that leads to my third question. You've talked about protections of residential users um from um I guess the the demand on supply that um will will be placed on the system by these data centers. But I also want, I think I have to ask this question as a local representative, to the extent that this affiliate or subsidiary becomes a highly profitable venture, you talked about charging them at installed capacity, not based on demand, you could imagine a scenario where you guys are going to do pretty well. And um I would like to understand, regardless of whether or not the profitability of that affiliate or subsidiary is consolidated within REC itself, I'd like to understand to what extent my constituents will benefit, homeowners will benefit from reduced um electricity costs because of, I'm just going to go out on a limb, the tremendous profitability that you'll realize through this affiliate or subsidiary.
Absolutely. So thank you for the kind words for Lindsay and Jeff. Um we recognize daily that we have rock stars amongst us, so thank you for that. To your question of the affiliate and the availability of financials, we absolutely, we actually have a third party doing it, um because we are doing for the not-for-profit Rappahannock side in-house, but we do have a third party uh group that will be doing all financials associated with all of our affiliates, which includes um Brillett, which is our IT affiliate, um RECom, and then now HyperScale Electric Services. Absolutely, we recognize as well that there is profit potential here. However, from a financial basis, um the spread between cost of power and the margin we're doing is a it's a standard margin. Um in fact, it's less than what we would see. It'll be based on the volume, not necessarily the the value per per kil- megawatt or however you would like to phrase it. But yes, and the way that would work as a wholesale wholly owned affiliate um would be obviously um REC made a capital contribution to establish the affiliate. They will do dividends or a capital dispersment in order to pay it back. And yes, we do, we do have the intention of looking at our membership. But one of the things we also have is to participate in PJM is a very costly thing. Um for an example, you may have to have ten to twenty million dollars to participate in what we expect our members to do, these large scale members, is to give us that money upfront. However, over time, because of establishing this financial obligation, we will also be looking at maintaining some of that equity in a case that we have to have what's called like a market blowout. An example, in a very extreme situation where you have a winter storm or a hurricane or something that creates a very high upward pressure on the market, it allows us to continue to participate during that moment. So to answer your question, Mr. Watson, we will be looking at how to bring it back to the members. And one of the, one of our main goals is always to benefit the membership because the risk has to be worth the benefit. And so we are looking at ways and what trigger mechanisms we would utilize to bring it back.
And my last point, um hearing about this this affiliate structure, I, and it's water under the bridge now, but um and Jeff knows my opinion on this, I really wish you had formed another affiliate called REC Broadband. That would have helped us a lot. Um but but I know you decided to stick with your core business and um you're good at distributing power and so we'll we'll let you do that. And I have to say that um since you you took over Allegheny's old service area here, um I can speak from my own experience that reliability is has gone way up. And when reliability is down, Jeff gets a text from me and then they come in and plug the cord back into the wall and my power's back on. So I appreciate how nimble and quick to respond you all are and and we appreciate you as a utility partner.
Thank you very much. And and also to say that we have not lost what the value of what REC stands for. We continue to serve our members. We continue to look at affordability, reliability and safety as our key metrics that we still look at internally to say, how do we serve the people that have been here this whole time? So thank you for those kind words.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rowdy, for for the presentation. I really appreciate it. Um so what my constituents want to know is um and it sounds like you've addressed this, but they're going to want to know rates are going to go up because we have data centers. Rates are going to go up, more data centers, rates are going to go up. What I what I feel like I've heard you saying is that this project isolates and sort of compartmentalizes the risk with the projects that are creating the data centers to insulate it from the everyday rate payers. Is that correct?
That is correct. And 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 the way we're doing that is to to kind of step back, rates are more of a mechanism of energy needs regardless of how we do the business needs, right? I mean, it's it's about if more megawatts are needed, it's a supply-demand economics situation. Whereas as demand goes up, supply continues to be constrained, therefore, there's upward pressure on pricing. However, one of the things we've done with the affiliate model is it takes the risk to where it, for example, the affiliate model allows that if one of these members cannot perform, AKA pay their bill.
Right.
They get removed from the pool, therefore, it has no impact on the REC membership because it it's directly tied to the hyperscale and its sub-affiliates, that's a one-to-one structure to these entities to where if they don't pay, um you know, it's as simple as don't pay, don't play kind of mentality. So therefore, they can't participate in PJM, therefore, they cannot get the electrons to to do whatever they need to do to serve their load.
Right. So am I correct now in hearing that this is twenty thousand megawatts more demanded?
That is correct.
Currently, what is it?
Currently, in some form.
Yeah.
Whether it will all materialize or not, that is, that is to be questioned. I mean, because ultimately, um it's like any other business venture, first to market is going to be, there there's going to be some, how do I say this, some, there's probably going to be some weeding out amongst those twenty thousand megawatts because people will say, if I can't be first to market or Dominion can't get us bulk transmission to a certain time, or if there's a challenge in delivering those electrons based on the timeline that they've established with their customers, then they may go elsewhere. They may not build at all, or they may somehow come together and form a conglomerate or different affiliate structure for the data center world that that would allow them to build one instead of five, whatever that may look like.
Uh so I'll do, my actual question was, how much are you delivering now? How many megawatts?
How many, I'm sorry?
How many megawatts is REC delivering now?
Our peak right now is eleven hundred and fifty megawatts.
Okay.
And we have about six thousand megawatts of data center load that is in some form of construction currently.
Okay, and and it's projected possibly, at least the ask is twenty thousand.
That's correct.
So that's just the concern that my constituents have is about their rates. But it seems like you're addressing it.
Well, we're addressing it to the best of our capability to our membership. Um and again, the reason I say it that way is simply if it were built in Maryland, if it were built in Pennsylvania, and I'm referencing the large loads.
Yeah.
Um it would still put upward price pressure on us because ultimately, a- again, it's a supply-demand issue that is larger than that. What we are doing is making sure as these loads materialize, under our obligation that Ms. Watson talked about, that we are separating the risk associated with those loads from our native membership. Thank you.
I I guess I'm going to join the choir and say how wonderful Jeff always is whenever I reach out to him about anything um in the Piedmont district. He's really a wonderful asset for your team and and always wonderful to deal with. I guess, I guess, I I think it's great that you all have constructed this, these devices to sort of attempt to insulate the membership from the impacts of data centers. But REC is still a, you're still a reseller, right? You're not generating energy.
That's correct.
So I guess, I guess my question, and this may not be entirely fair to you because you're managing your piece of the puzzle as best you can, but are the are the challenges of this of this system actually the next step up with Dominion, which is the the competing supply, uh the competition for supply at an upper level driving the prices up before it reaches these structures?
You know, I think it's, I think it starts with generation. And what I mean by that is currently in the U.S., over the last ten years, you have seen large, um for example, I want to say like seventeen gigawatts of coal has retired just in the last ten years alone. When you take that megawatt off of the grid, it automatically creates an imbalance because that additional megawatt that you have that's available to serve the next megawatt that comes on is now gone. So now you're getting a, a, and and I hate to go back to the same thing, but it it just comes down to supply-demand at the end of the day, where the the more we take off of the grid as far as retiring plants or not building them or not not investing in generation resources, the more you're going to put price pressures, regardless of where the data centers are, growth in just membership, growth in general, will create a challenge because ultimately, um when you look at long-term forecasts right now, there there are there are constraints in the supply side of the road.
Right.
Which is not what Rappahannock does.
Exactly.
However, at the end of the day, wherever the load is at, is going to still create that pressure.
Right. And you all are managing it as best.
And that's exactly what we're doing and that's one of the reasons that, you know, we work closely with Old Dominion Electric Cooperative, our wholesale power provider. Um, you know, they had a publicly announced uh announcement of a plant being built, six hundred megawatts in West Virginia. So as they're adding capacity, that eases and that's what we call a physical hedge to basically create more supply for as the demand gets created for them. And keep in mind, this wholesale entity that I'm referencing, this HyperScale Energy Services, is not served by Old Dominion. So therefore, there's a separation of your generation sources as well.
Okay, great. That's great. All right. And then I'll just all say imparting now, you know, in in the county, whenever we have an event coming our way, we always see the REC trucks on the road before anything even happens. And it really uh instills confidence uh in the value you all provide. So thanks so much for that, too. Thanks for your answer to those tough questions.
As as I tell the guys every day, that that rolled those trucks, if it wasn't for them, there wouldn't be me. So thank, I thank every one of them daily and and I'm so enamored by just watching what they do at like the uh Gaff and Go rodeo. I'm like, you guys do stuff that I'm not doing.
I smile when I see them in a parking lot before an event. I just, to have service like that in in a small area like this is is really, is really wonderful.
We're proud to serve.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I do, yep. So um because I get to go to a lot of meetings that are talking about data centers and I have friends that are in the electric, um electricians and that kind of um talk to me about the potential for brownouts and blackouts coming in the not-so-distant future because of so much demand. Um and I know there's like six data centers in Loudoun that have been built that don't even have power yet, so they're waiting for theirs. And I heard yesterday that there are, there's parts, I guess, I don't know if it's transformers or what, that are being built overseas and because of the demand, those are way behind on timelines when you're, so all of this, I I guess I'm a nervous Nellie a little bit, but for our citizens, it does make me concerned that we know something is coming and we're not really saying, nah, maybe you want to buy a generator or um, you know, solar panels, you get the, you get the credit right now that are going out in, I think, November and that goes away. Um how can we prepare our citizens for the what-if, even though you guys are doing a great job and trying to prepare for this? I'm told you're going to be the largest uh cooperative in the East Coast because of all this. So I I think I knew Rappahannock Electric, you know, right after Allegheny and so very small and growing. How how can all this be managed well so people aren't concerned that they're going to have to go do something to make sure they've got power for essential items in their home?
Such a great question. And my answer to you, there's three or four things you can do. Um one, let your voice be heard because ultimately, Virginia currently has the Virginia Clean Economy Act, um which does not allow for admit admitting plants to be built, which is, that's an option of the Commonwealth and totally understand that, but it does create challenges when you need those megawatts. The second thing is, is, you know, there there are what I call energy conservation methods such as um demand-side management or virtual power plants that you may have heard, looking at running electricity at later different off, what we call off-cycle times, such as not during the peak of the day and when electricity is at quote, at its most constrained moment in the market. But ultimately, I think it's going to come down to, you have a lot of choices from whether it be, you know, you know, Rappahannock looks at multiple things such as battery storage, such as solar. Um that's what Vividly Brighter, um which is under the RECom headline, um also does. You know, they do, they do some car charging, but they try to do it using solar um instead of using the grid. So there's a lot of different ways you can do it, but as far as an energy provider, what we can tell is, I mean, we've got like, for example, we've got a uh clean energy program that would be glad to be able to connect you with Louis O'Berry, who is amazing at coming out and doing a um energy audit of your home to see exactly, you know, what is your energy uses, what are the big draws, how can you get energy efficiency? Um it doesn't always have to be new appliances, it might be caulking your windows, it might be um solar panels might be an option at your home. Um, you know, there there are so many different ways you can do it, but I would tell you that um I think that's going to be a challenge for everyone on the grid, not not just in Rappahannock's territory, but I think what you're going to see is, it's going to be a challenge of, we we have to address that. We we have to get the generation available. That's the ultimate goal here, is is we have to figure out how to get the megawatts to meet the demand that's out there. And whether it's a data center, your home, um small business, large industrial park, um it it has to be met and and that's what it all comes down to. Um I don't think there's one right answer I could give you today and say, this is the best way to solve that because I think there's, there's twenty potential avenues and all of them have pros and cons, um due to cost, due to timing, due to um restrictive nature of um is it available? And and so all these things are definitely becoming things that are on our purview, too. And we continue to look at, monitor and try to figure out the best way to do that. But the best way we do it is by serving our membership through doing energy audits, through looking at their appliances to see if there's anything that we can do to help them. And that's what it all comes down to because reliability is our number one key. So it's how can we be reliable when the megawatts are not available?
Thank you. The only other thing I've heard is the um big data center companies are probably looking at the um mini nuclear plants and so to own their own, basically, to to create their own energy. So is your, is REC taking that into concern? I can see you building, you know, huge amounts and then all of a sudden, somebody gets a nuclear plant and you're dropping down considerably. So I'm concerned for you as a as a cooperative, um of what's coming ahead and I assume you've got strategic planning and everybody looking at that kind of.
And and we do coordinate even all the way up to the state level to look because data centers are large loads. I mean, let's be fair, um, you know, a large load would be anything over a megawatt. We're talking two hundred and fifty, three hundred megawatt campuses. Um so very large power consumers. And one of the things that we continue to do is we want to make sure they're real before we go and build out bulk transmission, which could increase prices, before we build out distribution systems, which increases those prices. We make them, and that's why I talked about the financial obligation we put on them upfront because these large loads ultimately, if they did just go away, then we've made a lot of investments. But what we do is we secure that. And Dominion does well in securing for studies, to look at their transmission lines, to say, this is what it would cost to upgrade. So we look at that across the board and it's a concerted effort to make sure there's a commitment by all parties before we move forward because this is not something that we, you know, and that's why I said about the twenty thousand megawatts, you know, how much of that materializes? I I I would be foolish to say a specific number, but what I can tell you is, is we will vet that out to make sure that those members are are really wanting to do what they say they're wanting to do before, and we will get that financial commitment from them upfront. And that's the, that's another thing is, a lot of these, we're we're hearing a lot about these data centers, but some of them have, you know, about these data centers, but some of them have, you know, in service dates of 2040, 2045. So it's, it's not all happening this year. Um, you know, like I said, we, we've got about 6,000 under construction, but some of those may be three, four years out.
I just have one more follow-up question, which is that because you guys are, you're not in power generation, um, how do you hedge that, you know? How do you hedge that? So we have a regional supply, right? And then all of a sudden, prices spike because for whatever reason, wind, solar, coal, people just are not producing energy. It would seem to me, and I could be wrong, um, that financially makes a lot of sense to send the power to the biggest users. You're going to get your return quickly. So how do you guys hedge that for the little guy, especially not being able to be like Dominion who just says, we'll do X, Y, and Z to generate?
So we also have an affiliate called HyperScale Generation Services. Um, didn't cover it here, but ultimately it does exactly that. It helps them bridge till bulk transmission's available, until generation's available to meet. And that can be behind the meter, that can be through PPAs, which is purchase power agreements of an asset. Um, it might be, for example, you know, if, if someone is long on capacity, in other words, they're an independent power producer into PGM, but they don't have a guaranteed service contract, so they, they have to basically bid into the market daily. It may be looking at something like that and saying, how do we deliver a PPA so that we can deliver, deliver those electrons to the actual load and make sure there's that marriage of generation with load so that you won't have that upward pressure on pricing? So there, there are things we're looking at and we continue to want to be that bridge. Um, and I know what that looks like? We don't know. We, we just started this in July. So in fact, if you, if anyone listened to Mr. Hugh Ethaniel meeting, he actually mentioned it there and that was the first time we'd mentioned it.
Can I ask you, thank you. Can I ask you a follow-up question? It would seem to me as, um, you're looking at this, 20,000 megawatts is a lot. And I'm a business owner. And if you have a business opportunity in front of you that's like huge, it's like, whoa, that, that looks pretty cool, let's try to do this. And you have all the daily users, all of us that pay for the rates. How internally do you guys handle that? Orale-wise? Because, you know, it's a lot of power that currently doesn't exist. Currently, it just doesn't exist. And so we're talking about building a house, right? But the land's not there yet. We're going to drain it and build a dike and then the land's going to be there. And so I just have had a lot of constituents coming to me just saying like, we don't, you know, and it's, we don't want anything because it's going to go up and there's no way they're going to protect us. What's the takeaway from R E C? Because I'm sure you guys are sensitive to this.
I, I think, I think the answer to the takeaway is, is we recognize the challenge that's in front of us and that's why we're doing what we're doing to try to keep it away from our membership as much as possible. And that's our number one goal is to ensure that as our membership is served through that wholesale power agreement with Old Dominion Electric Cooperative, that we're not, they're all, they're not serving, they're, I want to be clear, they're not serving the load of these large-scale generators. And ultimately, we are in a place, uh, as you saw when Ms. Watson had showed the map, Virginia is a very dark blue, which basically means at one point, I think they were 85% of the United States data center and in fact, equivalent to like 50% of the world data center load at one point, and it was all in Northern Virginia. Now as it's moving out into more rural territories because of the way AI and some of the generative AI works, that it doesn't have to be right beside the actual load factor where it's at, it allows it to move out. One of the things we continue to talk about with these entities is exactly what you brought up earlier, and that's why the, the creation of HyperScale Generation Services. If they're interested in generation, you know, can you bring generation on the table, too? Um, can you help, help in financing? What does that look like? Is it a joint venture? Is it, is it passive ownership? We, we don't know. And, but the answer is clearly, we continue to try to think outside the box to ensure to protect the members that we've had for, you know, 80-plus years under the Repahannick name in different areas.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And I, they, they've all kind of, my colleagues have kind of circled around the question I'm dying to ask you. Having read a little bit about you, um, and your biographical information, um, I understand that your career began at the Tennessee Valley Authority. So clearly you got your feet wet, uh, literally or figuratively there through hydropower on the supply side. At what point could a, a little electric cooperative, I say little because I still think of you guys as small and personal and I want to, generally want to continue to think of you that way. At what point does, uh, becoming a power generator make sense? I mean, and is it, is it just, you're just in a completely different economic world than those who are in direct power generation? I understand you're talking about these, like, uh, generation for data centers and forming joint ventures, but that's, I mean, would you ever get into the generation business in pure form, whatever fuel it would involve? And is there a threshold upon which you need so much power that it makes sense to make it yourself?
It, my answer's simple. Um, it's a very complex question. And so.
It seems like a complex.
I mean, the complexity is this, is the capital intensive cost of getting into generation is not something we want our members to ever bear because ultimately, R E C would have to step in at that point because they're the ones that have the balance sheet, the assets, the distribution system. Um, however, I won't ever say ever, but never. And, and the reason I say it that way is, is because if the economics play out that it's a long-term positive play for these large loads, because ODEC, remember, it's a wholesale power contract. We've came to an agreement with them that they will serve our membership. So being part of that, some of what we do and some of every bill goes to pay Old Dominion for their assets to ensure that they can continue meeting the load needs that they are signed up for, which includes Repahannick Electric, which is equivalent to about a third of their load.
Wow.
And so, so it is, it is really large.
Yeah.
But ultimately, if a financial means showed themselves from one of these large loads and said, hey, we want generation with this, um, we're going to listen and we're going to figure out the best way to get them there. Um, does that mean R E C ownership? I, I don't, I don't have an answer for that. Uh, but unfortunately, because I, I ultimately would have to, I would have to look at the economics and say, is that a good long-term play for the affiliates such as HyperScale Generation? Who owns the asset? How does the asset operate? Is it done through a purchase power agreement? Is it a joint venture? Or are we simply more of a matchmaker between a large developer who develops large-scale power and large power source? And, and how do we become that? So we don't know exactly what that looks like, but I think there's a lot of opportunities in this area. It's just for the simple reason of these loads are very, very large compared to what we've historically seen and they match off really well against what assets could bring.
Awesome.
Can I take a turn now?
Yeah.
I was just going to thank you for being, um, you know, forward-thinking. Um, and, and I was just going to piggyback, every, all of my questions have been answered. Um, and I was going to piggyback off of the, the Rockstar comments. And I also think it's really important, um, I was just in another meeting, I work for Laurel Ridge Community College, I was just in another meeting where R E C was cited as being probably the most responsive, um, partner to our launch of the Power Line Program, which happens next week. Um, and that's a big, heavy lift. So thank you for helping your community partners help you because I would imagine with this demand, you're going to need, we're, Ms. Smith talked about the trucks rolling up and you marveled over their, um, their jobs and, and what they do. Well, someone needs to teach them how to do it. So, and I've already been emailing Mr. Henry, do you know anyone who can be an instructor? So, but thank you for responding so quickly and generously to that program as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Just real quick to help me just clarify a couple of things. Um, your, uh, the HyperScale plan is to, um, limit risk on the customer base by forcing distribution costs that are attributable to a data center onto that data center or large user.
That is correct. That's what the dedicated facility portion.
Is there, is there an opportunity to do that for transmission even though you're not in that game? Who's building these transmission lines to feed this independent substation and who's paying for that?
So Dominion builds the transmission and Dominion has to make those choices, um, at the state level as to how they recover the cost of that, um, whether it be through, you know, return on investment or whether it be through upfront capital injection from these large members that are causing the bill.
And because you source power from ODEC that, other than broader market forces, that wouldn't affect ODEC? Your rates through ODEC, whatever is happening with the transmission costs on the Dominion?
Well, even though ODEC is our generator, we still utilize some Dominion transmission. So, so I mean, it, it is a, how it says, it's a partnership all the way around. We all have some part to play in delivering.
So that bleeds into this question. What portion of our typical rates is distribution and what portion is transmission and supply? And so if we were to say, oh, transmission is supply, might double, triple, quadruple, what portion of the whole rate structure that we pay is that?
So about 35% is associated with distribution. The other 65% is through generation and transmitting to get us to the transmission side of the world.
Got it. So if that 65% doubles, that helps us understand if it was 5%, we might be saying, mm.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
This was very informative and I really do appreciate your honesty and, and being straightforward on this complicated subject, but it's going to.
Absolutely. And, um, on the last page, we actually have our emails, mine, Ms. Watson's and, uh, Mr. Henry's. Um, I know you, obviously everyone knows how to get ahold of Mr. Henry.
Oh, yeah.
But, but mine, Ms. Watson's email are there. And if you have any questions or any follow-up comments or anything, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. We'll be glad to respond as quickly as possible.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Good job. I think Mr. Henry needs to corner office.
Yes.
In our town.
Here in Little Washington.
Yeah.
All right. At this time, we move into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized and come up and give us your name and your district and, um, we'll keep it to five minutes or less.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board and Community Members. My name is Josephine Gilbert and I live in Fauquier County. I'm here to talk to you about the PATH Foundation. The PATH Foundation was formed in 2013 as a joint venture between Fauquier Health and LifePoint Hospitals. Its mission was to serve the people of Fauquier, Repahannick and Culpeper by funding programs that improve health and well-being. But PATH has drifted from that mission. Around 2017, 2018, they spent $20,000 to bring Pedro Noguera, a national equity activist into the Fauquier Public Schools to promote equity initiative. This was the first clear indication of their willingness to fund ideological programs rather than community health and wellness. By 2020, its programming leaned heavily towards DEI initiatives. They accelerated in 2021 by accepting $15 million from billionaire Mackenzie Scott, whose philanthropy prioritizes racial equity, gender justice and systemic change. Going forward, local grant-making is increasingly tied to its destructive ideology. While marketed as capacity-building, these programs are rooted in progressive ideology, not the needs of our larger, excuse me, conservative rural communities. In fact, PATH is sponsoring a new white supremacy workshop through the Center for Nonprofit Excellence C N E, scheduled for, actually it happened last month, right here in, uh, Warrington. And please forgive me. I'm going to do this with me so I could read to you what the actual class was called. "Collective Healing: Breaking the Cycle of White Supremacy. A Three-Part Series Exploring How to Disrupt Harm and Foster Organizational Healing and Equity." I'll move on. The superintendent connection is a particular concern, and by the way, that's in Fauquier, who brought deep equity training programs into our school, now sits on the PATH Foundation Board. This creates a direct pipeline between progressive educational ideology and PATH's funding priorities. Having the same superintendent influence PATH's community investments raises red flags about accountability and priorities, in addition to other organizations that are not in the three counties of the original mandate, for example, C N E, which is headquartered in Charlottesville. I'll be meeting with our county supervisor and I will try to obtain a copy of that 2013 agreement between the three counties, just to see exactly what's spelled out. I urge you that you do the same with your county attorney. I, um, the financials, by the way, for the benefit of the community, I gave you my testimony. And again, for the benefit of the community, their financials, and this is, I'm a former finance person that retired. And when I saw these numbers, and, and these numbers that I'm giving you came right out of the PATH Foundation, which does not a lot of information, but it has these numbers, this community report. And I'm calling, it's called community giving because that's exactly what they call it. So just an example for the community, 20, 2020 was their large community giving at 18.8 million. That same year, their assets were 251 million, liabilities almost two. However, they have net assets of $249 million. Ever since 2020, we're down to last year in 2024, their community giving is 10.4 million. Assets of 292, liabilities about four, so they have net assets of 288. What does this say to me? Giving goes down, their assets go up. These financials are problematic at best, in my humble opinion. So please, do your own review. I'm urging my county to do its review. I'll be speaking to Culpeper to do its own review. And I appreciate the service you guys provide to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Sheila Gressinger, Hampton. I wasn't, I wasn't going to say anything and then after, um, the electric company spoke, I did want to compliment them. They've been absolutely fabulous since they took over. They've been very proactive the whole time and they've been a huge benefit for our county. Then I wanted to address the data centers. And I, this is, I just haven't heard anybody address it quite in the way I'm going to. All I've heard is the drain of us and the customers from the, the data centers. And then I was reading in the Fauquier paper in Remington, they were concerned about their water, they're also concerned about the drain of their electricity. My question is, what is the data center's participation in this? I think if you're entering in negotiations with a data center, which would then eventually affect us, what is their participation? I think they should be, uh, required to provide a certain percentage of their own electricity. Now, in Remington, they were doing a different, uh, architecturals to do sort of a slanted roof on some of the data centers there. They could put solar panels on their own data centers. They could be required to do a certain percentage of their own water generation rather than draining it from the people where they're going to build the silly things, the things that, I think we're going to need them, but I think they need to participate in, in, uh, assuming some of the burden that they're requiring of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Mark Aderson for the Piedmont District. I'm here to talk about our courthouse. That attachment to your, uh, questions, answers draft is a marvelous piece of work. And somebody put a lot of effort into that and everybody that did should be commended. Uh, I think it's pretty much objective, pro and con on various alternatives. I would offer one additional alternative, which is that you consider or the process considers, uh, looking at alternative sites and/or conversion of existing structures for possible courthouse purposes. I'm not going to try to talk you into putting it outside the county. I think that fight is over, or at least it would take too long to do it. We don't have that much time. Uh, other counties have located their courthouse outside of the county seat, notably Augusta County, and saved considerable money by doing so. Based on the questions and answers, we may not save anything by trying to do that, but it should at least be looked at, I think. I think the idea of having a public hearing is a great idea. But you've got to build, from a policy standpoint, you've got to build more support for this or there's going to be this, you would cry after the tax increases take hold and people see their bills. Uh, there are two things that are making it harder and harder to have affordable housing in this county, two other things. One is the potential tax increase from this and/or schools. And the other is what appears to be inevitable increases in power rates. Both of those impact on every resident of the county, whether they own their home or they're just renters. So that's something to take into account. I realize there's a pressing need for this public structure for the courthouse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Nobody else in the courtroom? If not, we do have people online. I'm not sure anybody would wish to speak, but I will open it up now. If you would like to, please raise your Zoom hand. All right. Not seeing a Zoom hand raised, I will go ahead and close public comment. We have consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to-
That'll be approval without that item. You already adopted.
Adopted consent, consent agenda with the agenda item for Mr. Jenkins removed.
A motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Full business.
With the, I don't know how long it's gonna take to get through these items. Perhaps the board would want to bring the bus topic to the presence of Ms. Grizzly and go through school.
Sure. Do I need to make a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to relocate the bus agenda item to-
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So I asked for this on the agenda. So, so this year, my, my calculations are correct. The county opted to make a separate line of funding for two buses, which are on order. But then the school elected to find additional, when it was recommended to you all that there were additional buses available. There are now three used buses, which are coming to you all from Chesapeake County at a cost of-
About forty thousand, forty-five.
Each. Okay. So like a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional spending.
Which we had put aside for one. They were planning in the-
Can you give the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
To find one.
So to buy one bus, new, one new bus was what was in the county budget for the school budget. So that was the plan going in, and our vendor had brought us that, that deal, and they opted to get the three instead to stagger the amount, knowing the two would be coming and hopefully have the fleet last a lot longer and, and meet the immediate needs, so.
Yeah, but we needed four.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're gonna have five.
Yes.
And so from my perspective as a supervisor, I have a hard time explaining that to people when they cost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the new ones. I mean, don't, and the funding, you all have already received the funding for the two new ones, or is that still on the county side?
It was appropriated as part of the school's budget.
Okay.
Specifically for the buses.
And the order for the buses came through the schools or through the county?
Through the schools.
Okay.
In equal proportion of us.
So, I mean, I, I think we have one bus too many. And well, the way the budget cycle went this year, I can't ignore a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that I feel we shouldn't have spent. And so I, I, I know that we don't have the funding at our disposal, and there's, I assume there's no way for us to claw it back now it's been appropriated. Mr. Curry?
That's, that's correct.
We would just need to issue a communication to the school board stating this viewpoint and asking them to cancel one of the orders for one of the buses, because they're, they'll be meeting the need for the four that they needed with the three used and, and the one additional new school bus. And I, I think that's appropriate, and I'm, I'm curious to hear what my peers have to think.
I'd be curious. Christine's whittled it down, I think, to, we're talking four buses versus five. I guess my question to you is, is that, is that analysis correct? Is this effectively putting you in a position where you would be receiving five buses instead of the four that we all talked about? And if that's the case, do you agree or disagree with her analysis that we basically have appropriated a hundred and eighty thousand more than we now really needed to?
Well, and I would say that at the time that we were discussing this, the two were certainly the way to go, that we needed the two new buses. We in fact needed four.
Right.
The school board knew that we would need one more, at least one more. We actually needed two. So they put in to, to purchase one new. We had the ability to get three used, which three used is not like a new. It still has more miles. It still has other pieces that you have to look at. So it's not the same as a new. I would say it's one of those situations like anything else, right? With facilities or something, either we're gonna pay now, pay later, sixty-three percent increase over seven years. You have to look at the whole picture. We did not know about the three was even possible. That has never happened to us in this situation. So there was something that came about later, but I am happy to bring the thoughts of the board to my school board next month.
Yeah, and I certainly didn't mean to imply that anyone had done anything wrong.
Yes.
It's a wonderful, you know, twist of fate that suddenly we have, you know, plus one school buses when we initially started out minus four school buses.
Yes.
I, I don't, I don't mean to, to make it sound like anyone did anything wrong. But now that we are in the position we are in, I think it's important for us to recognize that the needs are being met by four, and, and we have an opportunity to cancel one, and there's no penalty attached to the cancellation. And I, I-
Sounds of emotion.
I think that, yeah, we should do that. And so I would make a motion that we communicate to the school board. Our understanding through the budget cycle was that there was a need for four school buses. We will now be in receipt of five, and there is an opportunity to, without cancel. And so we would kindly and seriously diligently urge our peers on the school board to cancel the order for one of the two school buses, the new school buses, which are on order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
So you, you learned of the three, just in sales. I was in sales for several years. You learned of the three when you purchased the two, correct?
No, it was a couple of, I wanna, I, I can find the exact date. It was months afterwards during the summertime when we were placing that order.
But how did, how did you learn of the three?
Through Sonny Merriman, who's our, our vendor for the buses. He called us.
Exactly. Exactly. So you learned of the three through a very good working relationship?
Correct.
Now, here's my other question. Last year, how much would this same bus had cost, would have cost?
It was pretty similar. I think it was a hundred and forty-three thousand, and they quoted us originally at one sixty-three. And I think it came in around one, thank you, hundred and fifty-two.
Okay.
So in that same kind of vein, but only eight years ago, they were about eighty thousand.
Right. So we, we are one bus up.
Yeah.
So next year, we don't need to, we don't need to buy you a bus. The year after that, we will be up for a bus.
Potentially, depending on the routes and ridership and those things.
So potentially. So then maybe the year after that, it'll be time to buy a bus.
Mm-hmm. It will.
It will, it's a fair statement that while there's no penalty to cancel this bus purchase, we will likely pay a little bit more for the exact same bus when it comes time to purchasing that bus. I mean, I know that you can't answer that, but that's-
Based on the trend data, that seems to be the case every year. Yeah.
Additionally, we could potentially damage our reputation with the vendor because he likely told, he, you said this has never happened before. So I do worry about reputation and good business practice.
Well, that's a lot of speculation.
It is a lot of speculation.
And I would just say that, you know, you've sat here in many meetings, Supervisor Comer, and you've pointed toward myself and Supervisor Woodson, and said you were gonna hold our feet to the fire for ways to reconcile the shortfall from this year for the, the budget that we passed versus not adopting the meals tax on which you joined us. So, you know, this is, this is some revenue which we could recoup. It's very reasonable to do so. There's no reason to hurt anybody's feelings. Thank him very much for the lead. It paid off. Buses are in high demand. It will not set him back. And it's a good working relationship. So I think that's a lot of speculation, and, and, you know, we are in a tough position. This budget cycle will be in an even tougher one next year. And we need to, we need to make, save money when we can, and this is one of those opportunities.
Mr. Cardy?
I agree with Mrs. Comer. That was, that was gonna be my question, is, is that I'm not, I don't, A, we have no authority to tell you guys not to, we can issue a letter, but we can't reach into your bank account, claw back, or tell you how to spend it. The second thing is, is that I do think that you'll have to buy a bus within the next three years, and it is not gonna go down. And it is a windfall. That is true. But that's a good thing. So I agree with Miss Comer in the sense that you guys did a great job in getting more buses, and we've been behind. So I, I'm, I'm gonna vote no on it, because I don't see any productive conversation of going into your school board and telling them that you guys have done something wrong. And I truly don't see that happening.
I made it very clear that at no point did I mean to imply that anyone did anything wrong.
I'm saying from my, I didn't say that you did. I'm saying from my perspective, it would, it would feel that way. When I think that it is very likely that in the next couple of years, you'll need to buy another bus.
So if we don't-
It will only go up.
So we don't have authority to request from a, a town to share revenue into the county general fund to take pressure off of our taxpayers. And now we don't have authority to say to the school board, which by the way, folds its financials directly into the county's general ledger, that there's no financial mechanism by which we can claw back a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I would say to all of that, wrong, wrong. And if we don't have the authority and we represent the voters of Rappahanna County, then who the heck has the authority to make critical fiscal decisions? And I applaud Ms. Smith for thinking this through, and I support her motion.
If I am, correct me if I'm wrong. You bought three buses. Each bus is forty-five thousand dollars. So if we said, give that bus back, it's forty-five thousand dollars. And then next year, you're gonna need a bus that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To me, you saved money by thinking ahead. And that bus may not get used for a year, but not putting miles on it isn't awful as long as it's maintained. And then next year, during the budget season, I will be thrilled to say I don't need to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget because you got the bus for forty-five thousand dollars. I, I don't understand the, the motion.
I'm not talking about canceling one of the used buses. I'm talking about canceling one of the new buses.
That's already on order and supposed to be delivered in January, February.
But can be canceled at this time with no penalty.
If the-
Per the report of our staff.
If the, if the school board wants to do that, I was, I, I genuinely am not trying to say,
I, I'm saying that I don't want to vote for this because I feel like this is a fiscally responsible thing to do, because we're gonna have to buy a bus in the next three years, and it will go up. I mean, yes, there is a possibility it will go down. But when's the next time you're gonna be able to buy three buses at a crazy discount? Don't know.
It's not happening.
Take a bet.
There's a lot of speculation. I would just speculate, what if we have an opportunity to buy more used buses and save more money?
Correct.
I, I think that was a great windfall. And I, you know, you, when, you gotta strike when the iron is hot, and we have a chance to save some money here. Didn't think it would happen this year, that's for sure, but we don't have it very often, and this is one of those opportunities. And we need to urge our peers on the school board to take advantage of this opportunity and cancel that bus, which is truly a surplus.
Until next year.
We don't know.
Who knows?
We're all guessing.
She's, no, I mean, she's got a list of when her buses go.
We don't-
But we don't know the availability of buses given any year to year, and there could be additional used buses come available. Apparently, it happens all the time. We talk about it every year, and this was, this is a great opportunity. We are, we had a, we had a deficiency in our budget. We pooled on the general fund. This is a chance to reconcile some of that. And as a, trying to be a fiscally responsible representative for the people of Piedmont District, this, this was something I could not ignore.
Yeah, and it, it covers, it covers more than half of the deficit created by our majority vote to not increase the meals and lodging tax rate. So, I mean, it's a huge win. It bridges some of the gap that Miss Comer rightly pointed out we needed to cover. And to me, it makes sense. And I mean, whether, whether we want to admit it or not, sometimes in Rappahanna County, actually oftentimes, there is a certain amount of cobbling together solutions. But that's who we are. We're, we're spirited. We're nimble. We're fiscally restrained, and that's why it's a beautiful place, because we don't overspend, and we save when we can. So I, I think what Ms. Smith has done here is, is perfectly in line with the vast majority of the people I represent. And I, I again, thank her for her analysis.
What was that motion again, please?
Just at risk of waiting, I just want to be clear that this money was pulled from the fund balance to pay for the bus. It will not do anything to bridge any gaps of recurring revenue. Want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Yeah, we'll put it back to the fund balance. That would be great.
Yep.
Which that's been, I mean, we've been pulling on that steadily as well.
Absolutely.
It's like half of what it was before, right? I mean, if we look at that report.
Yep. I've asked him to read your motion, please.
And I'll paraphrase. There's a need for four buses. There was a need for four buses. Now we have five incoming. Encourage the school board to cancel one of the two new buses.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 The other half of that vote?
Yeah. All those not in favor, say nay.
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 I didn't hear Ms. Comer's vote.
Nay.
Thank you. But don't expect money for a bus next year.
Thanks, Shannon, for sticking around.
Thank you.
All right. Where are we? Yes. Broadband project discussion. Ms. Smith?
Oh, this is something I ask every month to keep on the agenda. I hear that there's talk about ceremonies, things of that nature. The future is imminent.
I can give a brief update, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to get an update this morning. It's, before the agenda went out, I was able to confirm that All Points now has nine, had at that time nine miles of VDOT land use permits in their possession, and they had another eleven miles pending approval, which is good. That is enough to get their contractor out. They had a contractor VDOT kickoff meeting scheduled for last Thursday or Friday, to which they invited me, but I was not available. I did not, wasn't able to check back in to confirm that that happened, that it went well, that there weren't any issues. Maybe others do know.
It, yeah, so what I have is that the vendor, which is called S&amp;N, will start construction activities late this week at the earliest. And the meeting between All Points VDOT and, and that, that construction contractor, which I think was scheduled for last Wednesday.
Oh, may have been.
Had to be rescheduled, or it's going to happen this Wednesday. It was rescheduled from last week. But we're hopefully on the verge of digging, beginning. And my understanding is it'll be lucky you all down in the, down in the Fletcher's Mill area of the county. So that's what I, what I have.
The communication that I have had with All Points was that I was not interested in bringing to the board any thought of a groundbreaking ceremony until the ground was broken.
Correct.
Okay. That seems like a reasonable response.
And, and very broken.
Right.
Yeah.
Not, not one shovel folder.
And, and then just since the meeting has started, it looks like we've received the financial report from Gretchen Henderson. And it looks like we're at six point four million in our bank account now, which means if, if, again, if my math is right, we're three hundred thousand to the good in terms of interest.
Five point nine is your contribution rate.
Okay, great. So five hundred thousand. That's a nice round number to, to claw back money.
Yeah, and I didn't hear back on a date. Anybody wanted to have an RCPA meeting? But whenever I hear of that, I'll try to pull one together.
I'm waiting to get some clarity from a couple of members on dates. All right. Anything else? Nope.
Appreciate you all reviewing that every month. I, I know it can be tedious, but I think it is an important touchstone for the people of the county that have questions.
All right. Courthouse project continued discussion.
Madam Chair, I'll, I've got, if I can jump in. I don't know if there's a specific discussion. I want to thank Mark Anderson. Apparently, he and I had a meeting of the minds in our collective consciousness somewhere overnight, because you just paved the way for me. So as everyone knows, I've been concerned about the estimated cost of the courthouse. And I guess it comes down- And I guess it comes down to two, two variables, the cost, and then the extent to which we might be able to realize additional recurring revenue to help cover some of the, the debt service burden that will be placed on Rappahanna County taxpayers. And to that end, I, I have been exploring somewhat publicly possibility of alternative revenue sources. Want to be in the town. But I'm gonna set that aside for now out of respect for members of the town council. And, and setting, in setting that aside, I just wanna say to everyone that I am not comfortable with the current cost estimate on the courthouse. And to that end, I'm gonna put forward a motion, and we'll see where it goes. My motion is as follows, three parts. Number one, direct Mr. Curry to request from Glave and Holmes and other relevant interested parties, on an expedited basis, a cost estimate for an alternative to our current courthouse plan to include but not limited to, A, an alternative site, whether here in the town of Washington, for example, the proposed location of what is known as Rush River Two, or in the Route 211 corridor, including but not limited to any one of what are known as the bank lots, or through the adaptive reuse of an existing property in the commercial corridor on 211. B, the application use of alternative building, building materials. And three, an estimate of the lifetime wastewater, water and utility costs that would accompany construction of a courthouse on an alternative greenfield type site. So that's all part of, part one of my motion. Number two, to the extent we might construct a courthouse outside of the town of Washington, primarily as a cost-saving measure, by this motion, I would also request that the county attorney outline for the Board of Supervisors the steps needed to pursue a public referendum for the purpose of locating the courthouse outside of town. And finally, three, convene as soon as the requested cost estimate is completed, through this motion, a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors to, A, review the cost estimate, review next steps needed for the possible pursuit of a public referendum for locating the courthouse outside of the town of Washington. And C, importantly, in conjunction with that special meeting, to offer an opportunity for the public to weigh in on both the cost estimate and the possibility of pursuing a public referendum.
Was there, can you go over A, B, and C of number three, please?
Sure. Part three, A, so part three is convene a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors at the earliest opportunity to, A, review the cost estimate requested in this motion. Number, and B, sorry, B, review the steps needed to pursue a public referendum. And C, to include a public comment period, so the public may weigh in on both the cost estimate of an alternative site for the courthouse and the possibility of pursuing a public referendum. And I'm happy to clarify any other parts of the motion. I try to be organized, but I realize that I might not speak as clearly as I've written.
Do you think it's possible within this motion to, this, the, have Glave and Holmes give us a scope of how long this would take and how much it would cost?
Yeah, so I would tell you that their obligations are complete outside of a public meeting. So this will instigate a fee proposal, which is reasonable, and they, I mean, they would do. So that would be the first step that I would do. And I guess if it was within my purchasing authority, if we actually think we're out of money in that space planning capital item, so I'd have to appropriate money to that. So it's a little bit of a lead-in to, to make sure we have the money.
Yeah, and, and that's my motion. And all I can say is, I, having tried to go the revenue route to cover some of the debt obligation that's gonna be placed on taxpayers, and having really met a dead end in this regard, and that's, this, that's not criticism of the folks in town at all. I've had nice conversations the last week with Mayor Whited and Vice, Vice Mayor Catlin. Very personal conversations. I appreciate the exchange I had with them. But I've come to the conclusion that tying this project to the hope and dream of revenue sharing with the town is, is not prudent. And so then I'm left feeling like the only other prudent thing that I can put forward is the idea of at least exploring the possibility of significantly reducing the cost if that alternative revenue source is not available. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. And it's, I understand it, it's potentially disruptive, but I, I, I put forward this motion with great respect for you all, and hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
No, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Wait, can I clarify? So it will, they'll give us a fee proposal for this question?
They will not do work without a fee proposal, yeah. Some of it is not cost on them, the county attorney work and the meeting.
So we have a motion and a second discussion.
Can you, I missed, can you just read it again?
Why don't I try to make sure that I've documented-
I wrote down, I was writing as fast as I could.
Sure. A three-part motion, direct Mr. Curry to request a cost estimate, revised cost estimate from Glave and Holmes and other relevant interested parties. Well, right, their team. For alternate site, which could be Rush River Two, which would have public water and sewer, or perhaps bank lot or somewhere in the commercial corridor that wouldn't have public water and sewer. Consider the use of alternative building materials that might change the cost. And then consider the lifecycle cost of the private water and sewer system that would be needed if it was an impact on a public water and sewer system. And then two, direct the county attorney to outline the process through which a public referendum could be put to the community regarding potentially moving the courthouse away from the contiguous parcels of where they are now, which would be needed if you did that. And then three, once that information is available, convene a meeting of the Board of Supervisors to, A, review cost, B, discuss the referendum process, and C, provide for public input.
Okay, two was, there was no A, B, and C to two.
No, one, one had three parts, and three had three parts.
So it's a seven-part motion.
It was three parts.
Let's count. The alternative material one, what are you thinking there?
Well, it's just, we, I think, I think if we're, if we're, if we're going to seriously consider reducing the cost, and what, what I would say is implied here is that I, I have come to a point where I, I get the two courtroom configuration. I get the layout, I get the required square footage. So I put that in there as, you know, alternative, alternative materials, meaning, okay, if we, if we consider putting it somewhere else, and the goal is to reduce the cost significantly, to what extent would not building a brick building mean for the overall cost? You know, is, is there some other way to build it? So I, in a very general sense.
There, there are potential opportunities through timber construction versus a typical commercial construction. And not my motion, from my perspective, I would wanna know the lifecycle costs.
Correct.
And, and are we getting a building in the last 20 years, 50 years, 80 years, 100 years?
Yeah, and I'm not, and I, and I love to general on purpose, but I at least, you know, I said including but not limited to. These were, to me, the big questions, like a different site, that's, I call it greenfield. I know that's the right term, but let's just say an empty lot, and then building it in a different way. But with the implication that I think we've all, and the, the group of judges have all kinda run this to the ground in terms of configuration, size, function, and all that stuff. And so absent, absent a new recurring revenue source, which I've, I and we have tried to pursue, then how do we cut the cost before we dive into this? And I think we owe that to taxpayers, to at least, and I think Mr. Anderson, again, thank you for reading my mind, had thought the same thing, which is, before we, before we hit go on this, and again, I'm not, my goal here is not to block the project. It's just like, before we go and hit go, let's make sure that we've considered one last alternative approach to doing business with this courthouse. And that's hopefully what I've encapsulated in this very clear, simply put motion.
I mean, my gut is that the public would have a easier time with a different looking building outside the campus. Right? So if you're gonna, if, if you're in a blue sky and say, "Yeah, we could, let's move out to the bank lot," I think that, I feel like the public would have an easier time with something that doesn't look like a handmade brick building. And so I do think that that's where that value could come in.
I appreciate that.
And my mention before about a pole barn stands is that you, you can go as cheap as, you know, whatever, but I think what I felt was that so long as we've got the campus concept in here in the town, I felt as though that the public really wanted it to fit with everything. And I, and I think that that's wise, and I think that that's good. But, but I do think that at least doing that part of that due diligence there, because, and maybe I'm wrong here, but I don't know that any, the building committee, I don't know if that was ever seriously pursued.
Moving it out of town, no.
Yeah, 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 okay. I, I agree though with Mr. Whitson that I'm, I do not wanna block this, and I really don't wanna slow this down. I think that the public is, they're increasingly, I feel like, and I've talked to some very skeptical people who I've kind of walked them through the safety, and I've walked them through what we need, what we need to do. And I think to Mr. Anderson's point, comments previously is, you know, this is a lot of money. And I've said that a million times, and I know I sound like a broken record. But I think getting as much participation, at least among the members of this board, is pretty critical for this huge project. So, you know, as long as this isn't gonna cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to do.
It's gonna be, what level of detail do you need to make a decision? Is what I would ask, and as I'm trying to negotiate a scope fee. If they just come in and say, "Well, you know, square foot cost, 700, put a year, the nip tuck." That's, I don't know if that gives you the confidence to make the decision you need. So you need a level of detail that would supply you with the confidence that you're making a true A, B decision. And the cost estimate that was done here was very detailed. And so if you're gonna compare it to this cost estimate, you're gonna have to do it to the same level of detail. And it is going to cost, and it might be $100,000.
Mr. Whitson, if I may, Madam Chair, 15.2644 is referendum section. And it, it, it contemplates that, that the writ of election have a lot of detail in including the amount of money that can be appropriated to purchase the land and build buildings.
Yep.
So, and it's, that's a step that would have to happen before you petition Circuit Court for a writ of election.
Yep.
So I'm not sure what-
Did you have to purchase the land first?
Including land acquisition costs.
The petitions will also state the amount that can be appropriated by the Board of Supervisors.
I said, including but not limited to, we could put-
Unless the land is donated. And for the erection of the necessary building improvements at the neighborhood location.
So you'd have to have a, a pretty detailed estimate on both sides.
Yeah, because it's gonna have to be in the writ of election.
Yeah, and again, on part one of my motion, I did say, including but not limited to, and I tried to highlight some things. I just mentioned to Ms. Smith as an aside that some part D could be land acquisition costs as, as part of the cost buildup for an alternative site.
Tough to do, tough to do for a county, particularly when you talk about a motion like this, and the committee says, "Oh, yeah, I'll sell you one." When they know who they're negotiating with.
Yeah.
Gets tricky for a county.
I know. But anyway, I feel strongly that we, that we need to really think this through, because the current, the current cost for me is, it's, it's difficult to sell that. And at, at a minimum, I, I feel like I owe people a concerted effort on my part to look at all possible alternatives before hitting go, so.
So how do we put enough meat into this to give Glave what they need, to give us what we need?
Well, this isn't moving forward until we come back, because I will get a scope and fee that you're going to have to award. It's going to be more than 25,000, I guarantee that.
I think we, we can call a special meeting. I mean, I, I started this, and I will make myself available.
Well, I mean-
If I may be so bold, I think, I think one of the questions that may, or points that may have gotten us on a slippery slope with this current plan is that we, we did not set a budget. And I feel, and I hear from people, more importantly, that we need to simplify this plan if we're thinking about moving it out of the town. And I had written some notes for myself. Given the background of the building committee, we've gotten so far away from the original vision and purpose of building a new courthouse. And originally, the courthouse was supposed to be either remodeled or built anew for security. Security, security, security was the mantra. And now, while the plan is lovely, I feel we've been dragged into lots of other S words that weren't primary to the mission the first time it was accepted by the building committee. And there are words like scheduling, and space, and staff, and storage. And so this is my plea, I'm, I'm only here for two more meetings, to you as my peers, to please, if we are going, we, we now see why this is so difficult, right? We now see why no Board of Supervisors has ever been able to put this over the finish line. Because by the time it gets to this point, it is completely unpalatable. The price tag attached to it, the complexity of the project, the will of the people involved, it, it all begins to wane, and we say, "What next?" So my plea to you as my peers is to please, if we are going to undertake another round of planning, which I think is a good idea and a necessary idea, because I believe the path we are on with the current plan does not have any chance for success if, if we don't have financial support. There's no financial feasibility for the current plan. So if we are going to do that, please let us think of ways to simplify and focus on safety, and not some of the other concerns that have come forward to cloud the mission that is the courthouse project. I have some notes. These are more detailed regarding the current design. I think people should see the design that we received when contemplating the balloon flight. That, that graphic that Glave and Holmes put forward for us, to me, was a real eye-opener that this current design is just too big. The building as proposed is just too big in the context of the other buildings on the campus. And that's the front of the building. The side of the building would further cloud the beautiful campus we all enjoy. Details which you all have, I think, heard from me before on how to simplify the courthouse design are no plaza, simplifying the front of the courthouse. Look to our forefathers. What did they do in their wisdom? They built faux columns because they couldn't afford real columns. Let us think of ways to have a lovely building without spending a lot of money. Move the clerk's office, Ms. Foster's office into the building, because she is necessary as the clerk. But the Circuit Court Clerk, Ms. Struckman, she functions perfectly well in the building she is now. And if we need to put on in addition to that building, the square footage cost to add in addition to that building would be substantially less than new construction with all of the requirements for the new courthouse. This motion that we have in front of us already deals with the next item on my list, which is to relocate. No underground parking, no underground storage. There's no need for that. The judges should be greeted and, and- The judges should be greeted and in a fenced gated secured parking area with screening and the same for the prisoners. That would allow everyone to go back and forth as they need to securely. Of course, with separate intake areas for the judges and the prisoners. We do need a jury room. We do not need a second courtroom. The records I've pulled recently, thanks to Ms. Struckman, I believe there's been seven jury trials in the last three years. So this, this idea that somehow a hundred and thirty-three days or a hundred and thirty days of court over two courtrooms would be twenty-five percent use. Twenty-five percent use, we don't need a second courtroom, we just don't. And then the additional thing, which I think we all agree on, that we've brought up several times is just a small room for clients to meet with their lawyers. That's a, that's a proper thing to have in the building, but really very simple and a security screening area at the front, those simple needs met. And that would complete the objective for a new courthouse. This idea of building storage at a premium rate for the fire suppression that would be required for those spaces in the context of a new courthouse building, it, it's just, it's mind boggling and we, we need to put aside everything that's not essential and figure out how to put this project over the finish line. Thank you all for listening to my comments. I know it's an exhaustive process. And thank you, Mr. Whitson, for putting so much thought into how to work through our next leg. And I, I believe it is a good way forward. I believe we also need to budget and simplify as we undertake that step. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Any other discussion?
One other thing I did want to say, which is, and excuse me, I, I should have folded this into my initial comment, which is that as a member of the building committee, I enjoyed working with Wiley Wilson, who had a great give and take with the building committee and I thought was very responsive to our feedback and to the feedback of the board when the board worked through the building committee as well. I will say, I, I don't believe we have the same kind of relationship with Glave and Holmes. And I, I feel for my peers who have tried to put forward ways to simplify this footprint and have been rebuffed by the architect. And at the end of the day, we're responsible for this and, and we can only vote for and go conscience what the people of, of Rappahannock County will tolerate. And I, I hope that Glave and Holmes will, will receive this idea to revise in the spirit in which it's intended and, and really work with us in a way. I know they have pride of ownership over their work, I would too. But they need to understand we're in a tough spot and there is a reason why boards of supervisors have not been able to get this done. Thank you.
Um, there was, well, you know, you brought up something really interesting that I think Mr. Luke and his comments brought up, which is the clerk's space? This is, this is a really interesting thing to me because we don't have any of our records digitized and they're all on paper. And when people record property interests, they do it down there. And we do have some money allocated to fix up the facades. But I, and I, and I, and I know we've talked about this a lot, but I do think going forward, it is really important to figure out storage of those recorded property interests. There, none of them are digitized and then God forbid a fire ever happened in there.
Some, some are digitized.
Some are digitized, but there's a lot that are not.
Kate wanted to speak to it.
There's just a lot that are not. We, there is that, that is, that is, that is, that is interesting.
Yeah, scan them back up to the cloud.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, I don't know why it's not done already.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's interesting.
Many, many are. That building is built in non-combustible construction, it's concrete building.
But the point is, is that we do and have existed in ways that Rappahannock is sort of charming for. And one of them is not having G I S, which I support not having G I S.
But if you download the hunting app, you may still have it.
OnX, OnX does a lot, there are no layers there. It's occasionally wrong, but it's, it's bizarrely accurate. But it is something to, to, to think about, for sure. And it is something that people rely on.
And for me, we've spent a year going over the same stuff over and over and over again and acting like it's new when it's been the planning oversight committee around the table with all of us saying what they believed they, that is needed in that building. And I, I do understand the expense, but I, I don't personally believe a fifteen million dollar building is going to make people feel a whole heck of a lot better than a twenty-three million dollar building because it's all money that is going to hit their taxes. So I just feel like we are, this is like the last ditch effort in my mind as to trying to prove, just like we did with not adding on to this building, we spent the money to prove that that was the wrong idea. So i- in my mind, that's what you're asking is to spend the money to prove that it is or is not feasible. And it's going to cost, I, I'm guessing over a hundred thousand dollars just to get the answer.
And I, and I think that the way I've structured this, it, it leaves you all with the ability to, to turn down pursuing it. And I use the word expedited on purpose because I don't want this to be perceived by anyone as, as an attempt at a roadblock. Every, everything you just said is correct. It's, I have, again, I've seen, seen this either as a question of additional recurring revenue or cost reductions. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm certainly not setting out to prove that the idea of doing something a little bit different in a different location is going to be equally costly. I mean, my hope is that it's the opposite. But we need more than a back of the envelope calculation of life cycle costs on wastewater and water and other things. So if, if we find out that to pursue this is uncomfortably expensive just for getting a quote, then you all, including me, reserve the right to say no. But I think the question has to be asked.
So then a part of this motion is, how soon do we get back together to do a year and a half? We won't know until Garrett talks to Glave.
But as, as soon as, as soon as there's a choice to be made, and I, I even considered making this motion even more government-like by saying, I make a motion that we direct Gary Curry to go find out how much it would cost to explore all this. Well, funny enough, that's where we've ended up anyway.
Right.
But when I was thinking that through, I thought, oh gosh, that's pretty indirect, like I should just cut to the chase. So I cut to the chase, I said, we should do this. And Gary makes an excellent valid point, which is, well, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to define the scope of work and find out how much it's gonna cost. So my effort to cut to the chase through this process deliberating with you all has led us back to where I started, which is we at least need to find out what it's gonna cost. And if we can do that quickly, then we can all make a reasoned judgment about whether that kind of additional investment is worthwhile. I mean, everything, everything we do, everything anyone does comes down to basic cost benefit analysis. And everything you just said is absolutely correct. I, I think we're, Ms. Smith and I maybe disagree a little bit on this and I, and I really appreciated your comments, is, you know, I've, I've kind of gotten beyond the building configuration and scale and all that. And I, I think you've raised some really good points and it made me think through that again. But at least for now, I can say that I'm pretty convinced of, of the discussion, of the discussion for two courtrooms. And, you know, I'm, based on your comments, I'm gonna think that through again. But for the time being, I'm talking about taking kind of the scale, the layout, the general configuration and just asking, how can we do the same thing potentially in a different location, building a different way to get us back to maybe, I don't know, fifteen or sixteen million? Because I would disagree with you on that point, that it ain't just money. Because we know that the, the ongoing debt service burden on our taxpayers to cover twenty-four million or fifteen million, regardless of what our down cash account payment is, is pretty different. And considering we've only raised property taxes in the last six years by, I think, a couple of pennies, by Rappahannock County standards, the difference actually is pretty significant. So, but thank you for your comments, which were very thoughtful.
All right, so we've got the motion in a second, do you have any further?
No, I, I was gonna say something similar in that, you know, when, when we, when I started, when I joined you all on this journey, one of the things that I appreciated about our work with Glave and Holmes was that eyes wide open. We, we truly saw the difference in what renovating and building onto this building would look like versus a new building. Even though I knew, I had some hunches about what I thought, I felt like the decisions that we made were definitely well educated. So for, for that reason, I, I do believe exploring some of these, especially moving it out of the county, I mean, out of the town, again, eyes wide open. We'd be able to say, we turned over every single rock, every single pebble. I do, I, I do listen to the, those working in the building and those who have worked in, in courthouses many, for many, many years. So I listen to when they tell us what they need, I do value that. And I think that that, I, I wouldn't, I don't think I could be persuaded away from that. With all of that said, I, I think I shared a couple of meetings together that I'd spoken with someone who, they do this. And the one, one thing this person cautioned me on was storage, was with more and more things going to the cloud, to be mindful of, of wasted space, basically. So my questions would be, what, how is expedited defined? And what kind of delay we are looking at? And, and Garrett, could you remind me, I think I had asked for how much money we had spent exploring, turning over the rocks, so to say, and to speak. But could you remind me what that was? I don't have that in front of me.
I believe it was three hundred thirteen thousand.
Okay.
And it was roughly three hundred thousand. It was a hundred thousand with the building committee and then two hundred thousand with this body.
Yeah, around, I think three thirteen was the number, send an email somewhere.
Yeah, I know, I just.
And just to be clear, what I was saying with fifteen versus twenty-three, I think fifteen is a huge number that people are going to have the heartburn with, just like the twenty-three. It's not that I'm not saying it's.
No, and I didn't mean to say that you were saying one or the other. It, it did come out that way.
It's a big number.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, I was explaining to someone recently that I, I use my neighbor as the perfect example of kind of my, my most representative constituent. And I know based on her, her household income and her retirement status, I'm very mindful when I, when I speak on behalf of what I hope is the majority of my constituents, I hold her up as an example of the person I'm most trying to protect. And it, and it's, it is when I look at, at my neighbor, who I had a direct conversation with, driving in the car together to watch the Brewers beat the Nationals in D C. You know, she said, yeah, I can't, I can't swing another three hundred dollars a year. So the spread between fifteen million and twenty-four million for her boils down to the difference between maybe eighty, ninety or a hundred dollars a year additional tax, property tax burden and two hundred or two hundred forty, two hundred fifty. So that's where I'm coming from.
I had numbers, we just lost Zoom for some reason, I think. I had numbers transpose as three thirty-one. Three thirty-one, not three thirteen.
Thank you very much.
Maybe it was one thirty.
One thirty was on you.
For years, Lord.
Okay, okay.
All right, any other discussion?
So I, I just want to make sure I understand. So if we, if we do this, again, what is expedited? And if I under, if I understood art correctly, the earliest we could move forward would be next November. Say, everything, everything works really, everybody works really fast. Glave and Holmes gets back to us next week and.
If you needed a referendum.
Yeah.
I don't know that the referendum has to happen in November, I think it's.
The petition court. She'll fix the date.
Yeah.
So it could be a special election, it doesn't have to be like general election day.
Okay, all right.
The court would fix that date. But yeah, there would be some delay involved and, and so what you need to know, but you definitely, and then also one more thing to point out, if the voters come back with a yes, then the supervisor shall at once proceed to acquire the necessary land at the new location and to erect the necessary building. So you'd be, at that point, whatever amount that you put in the, in the referendum, he would be obligated to spend, so you better have all those ducks in a row.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, ultimately, I'm, I'm looking at just slices down to by seven, eight, nine million dollars. I mean, really. And I don't know how we do that based on the current plan and the current location. It's not, nothing at all against the town. I personally, and I, I should say this again, I think it makes sense to build it down at the end of courthouse row. I really do, I think it fits, I think that's what people expect. I want this county seat to thrive, but now I'm stuck on cost. And how do we, how do we build what we, most of us have agreed we need to build in terms of size, scale, configuration, in a cost-effective way that my neighbor and people like her can reasonably absorb that additional tax.
All right. Expedited, I, I still, I'm just not, like, how fast are we gonna come back together?
I could say as soon as possible, I mean, it.
So you're hoping this month we can get together?
Yeah, I mean.
But it depends on them, right? It's just gonna depend on how quickly they.
I mean, I can't define that, I don't, I just said like.
But I mean, you know, to, I mean, so, you know, I, I think that whatever they can pull, pull together, you know, I mean, they're just gonna have to, well, we will see them in a week and a half, right?
Well, does it make sense?
Well, it doesn't make any sense to do that, I don't think.
No, 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 no. Sorry, that wasn't.
I mean, I haven't seen anything firm about the.
I would have been in this discussion today.
People haven't heard anything about it. I mentioned it to someone the other week and they were like, what are you talking about? I haven't heard a thing about it. So we haven't publicized the footprint, so I don't know why we would proceed with that anyway because at this point, it's not gonna draw any people.
And I think was hopeful for October eighteenth because when we discussed it, the October eleventh date was, as you're saying, too close to this meeting. So we could do October eighteenth, but it kind of changes that.
I don't, I don't know, I, I still think that that is an important thing for people to see.
I would kick that down the road.
Okay, all right, that wasn't my intent here.
Well, I think to get, so what I was trying to say was that I thought we were gonna be saying, I thought it was in, we were gonna see them and I was like, well, that would be, as a board, we can just, you know, talk to Andrew and the other folks about their timeline. I don't know, they may be jammed up with work right now, I have no idea.
Right.
But my, what I was trying to say was that like, we do have one more bit here contractually with them, which is this meeting. And if we're gonna do this part, it does make sense to do it quickly, but hopefully to combine that effort so that there's more that the public could see. And I don't know what it will come out of this, I don't know what it will resolve. But if, if, if the point here is to just totally flush this out, right? It would make sense to then add that to the presentation, right? Does that make sense?
Add information.
Yeah, there's some cost savings, I think, to realize there by having, building in the, the final meeting and sort of a community engagement piece.
Right.
And tying that together, there could be some cost savings realized there.
And, and I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Whitson in the sense that I think that that area right there is the natural spot for it.
Yeah.
I had always made a very large assumption that we were building for the next hundred years.
Yeah.
Not for the next fifty, and that does come with a price tag.
Yeah.
I am completely sold on the two courtrooms for JDR purposes. And um, I, I just think it's expensive. I do think currently, what my suggestion was the last time, which was to, along with this, what Ms. Smith said, was to get rid of the below ground stuff and then to take out the refurbishing of this building would save some money. It wouldn't bring it down to sixteen million now. You know, uh hindsight twenty-twenty, but and I also do agree with Ms. Smith that it would have been very interesting at the outset of this to say, we're not going a penny above seventeen million. We're not going a penny above, but we didn't. Um, I do think now that um, that would have been interesting. But I do think it's worth doing uh, this building the right way for the next hundred years. Um, and I don't know what that'll end up looking like, but at this point, I really don't think it's a should we, it's we have to. And I feel like hopefully this step is in the right direction of getting this done. So that, so that, so that we can move forward um, together as a board to, to actually get it done. Cause I agree with you, Ms. Smith. I mean, this is hard, isn't it?
Well, I've sat in meetings with other supervisors from other counties. One, you know, when I went down to Vaco very early on, like probably twenty nineteen for the um, chairmanship training. And, and sat with folks that were going through the same contortions that we're going through. So it feels very singular to Rappahannock County. Uh, their referendum failed, I believe, by the way. So they had to basically start over, but they, they started with a place and should we move it outside of where it's currently located. So they, you know, the pain of going back to the drawing board is real. But it is an iterative process and um, you know, you would be foolish not to examine opportunities when they arise.
Did you guys hear that Culpeper is currently, for a hundred million, right?
I think it's one ten.
I think everyone is redoing their courthouses currently, including the one, what was the one that was painted white?
What's gonna use.
That you, uh, Madam Chairman and Mr. Whitson liked so much that they had, Nelson is redoing theirs. It just seems like everywhere you look, everyone is redoing their courthouse. So.
I, I mean, I think that, you know, getting the public on board at least with understanding that, you know, we've done the due diligence and, I mean, Culpeper's spending a hundred million. If we do anything that's under twenty million, I mean, that's a factor. I mean, they're much, much bigger. Their dockets are way more complex than ours, and I get that.
And they also have data centers to pay for.
But we don't, yeah, but we don't have the scale and economies of size to get these things done and anyways, anyway, we've gone over this a million times. Sorry to keep talking.
I, I try, I try to keep it simple, but I appreciate all of your, your thoughtful responses. And again, I just want to say I'm not trying to be disruptive. Number two, I'm not by any, by any stretch of imagination showing any disrespect to anyone in the town of Washington government. Again, I appreciate my conversations with certain of them recently. I believe that our best solution would be to put it down here on Courthouse Row. But I owe this, I owe this to the people who represent, so.
Mr. Curry, do you have enough detail for?
I reiterated the motion, I think, more or less correctly, so I think I've got it. And it's recorded in a couple of different places and if, if Zoom is not working right.
Yep.
I can tear my notebook page out if you really want.
I think we're good, yeah.
All right, all those in favor of Mr. Whitson's motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, um, so the quicker we can hear from you, we'll know.
Sure, and I just would like clarification that the eighteenth is not happening. I don't, I don't know why you would do it if it's, if it's only half the story.
That's fair. Yeah, sorry about that.
And it may be another opportunity for cost savings down the road if you can do both footprints at once. If there's a, if there's a referendum, you could lay out both.
Sure, yeah.
Yep, all right. Uh, and the frequently asked questions, great document. We'll just add to it, I guess.
Yeah, it's a really good working document.
Yep. Yeah, thank you for doing all that. We are on route to eleven Chendow National Park.
I had asked Mr. Curry to add this, realizing that we're, we're running maybe a little long. And my, and my board docs is down. My connection is down.
We haven't had any more meetings or anything right now.
Well, I did speak with Chief Ranger, Park Ranger Yount, um, at the Blue Ridge Committee meeting again. And I have communicated with the sheriff, asking her to provide opportunity for her deputies to sign up for weekend duty during the peak to help direct traffic slash patrol to eleven. We don't exactly know when the peak's gonna be, maybe a couple of weekends from now.
So we've got a real curveball here with the government shutdown.
The, the park is open.
Yeah.
The uh, entry stations are, are staffed, but they are not collecting fees. So that is.
Bathrooms are shut down and they're not collecting trash, right?
At the visitor's centers are not open, but the commercial vendors run by the concessionaire are open. So Skyland and Big Meadows, things like that. So there are some bathrooms and so it's a little bit of this, a little bit of that.
Okay.
Uh, without having people have to stop at the entry station to buy a pass. That will speed things up when the word gets out that you might not have to buy a pass.
Oh, totally out.
Yeah, that might increase traffic.
There were a lot of people out this weekend.
It's because the, it's the Saturday before was the free one, but it rained.
Yeah.
And then there was the government shutdown and then everybody.
And everybody's running for hills, literally.
And it was crazy.
So I, all I can say is that um, I've asked the sheriff to consider offering to her staff to provide an overtime opportunity, which can be funded through lodging tax proceeds that we're holding to the side. And um, there has to be interest to do that, and if that happens, that'll be great.
You should do an easy pass. Hearing you say that it is moving faster because no one has to stop.
They do.
If they do an easy pass that just reaps it and you keep like toll roads.
They, they're doing the Chick-fil-A model now. They have people out with iPads, you know, checking people in as they come in and trying to direct them to a different lane. Uh, but it chokes down to, you know, one entry lane from both directions, east and west. Uh, VDOT does have their signs up, the variable message boards up now.
Do you think there's an opportunity, maybe while the government shutdown continues, should we have um, a sort of greeting on our county webpage to explain what's, what's available and what's not available in the park? I think that currently it's occupied maybe by the.
We have pushed, we have pushed out the National Park Trust information on social media.
Great. Good.
And I think they're the best trusted voice of, cause the park service isn't really putting anything out.
Hopefully the local media will pick it up too.
Thank you. All right, um, going into board committee reports, uh, rec authority.
Yes, sadly, I was unable to attend the last meeting, so I don't have any updates.
It looks like there's some work trucks in the parking lot.
They're doing trail work.
Ah, good. Uh, Public Safety Committee?
I'm trying to think when we met.
We met before the last meeting.
Yeah, so nothing since. That's right, we met on Tuesday. We met on a Wednesday here.
Yep. All right, Planning Commission, that's tonight.
Uh, yes, and we're having a joint meeting tonight. And also uh, our special breakout meeting for Chester Gap is rescheduled for October fourteenth.
Uh, Fire Levy Board did meet.
I was not able to attend.
Reviewed the um, records, cost records for each of the fire companies. And with a few corrections, accepted them for each.
Thank you. Uh, can you pull up treasurer's reports or you can't see that either? Okay.
Is the internet like that or board docs?
Uh, board docs is having a problem. I might be able to get them kind of another way.
Email?
Uh, well, if.
I think mine just came back up.
Yeah. It was acting a little wrong this morning.
See you, Gary.
Hi, Gary.
There we go. They must be having a not great day.
Board docs.
Yeah. All right, what would you like to see?
Uh, cash.
There we are. As, as we talked about, having delayed bills out, delayed cash in. It'll bounce up as soon as the money starts flowing in. Bills aren't due till December, early December.
And food logic, please.
I don't know where.
Is each, each bar, each bar is a year, right?
Yep.
Okay. By quarter, by year?
This, this is clearly a full quarter. You wouldn't get there with two out of three months.
And sales tax, please.
Pretty strong.
Yeah. It's not even Christmas.
Which we won't see till February.
Right. All right, um, I asked Gary if he knew the VDOT monthly report shows fifty-some potholes filled for Rappahannock County. I find that very hard to believe, so I figured I'd follow up and see where the numbers come from.
That's an interesting question.
Are you gonna keep that?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Review legal matters.
Oh, yep.
Um, I did just update this. We heard from Mr. Capps just before this meeting. Uh, the Flint Hill case is scheduled for October thirtieth.
Therefore Halloween. Is that just like, is that a one-day deal?
It'll be like maybe fifteen minutes each side or something like that, I think.
All right, anything else anybody would like to bring up? Matters presented by the board?
I just wanna say, did, um, I hope everyone saw that farm tour did really well. And then just a, a thank you to those volunteers. I think um, it is a very successful event. It brings lots of people to our county. And I think sometimes it's easy to forget that those people organizing it and executing and wrangling all those cats, herding all those cats, they are doing that one hundred percent volunteer.
It is pretty impressive. And it rained. I assumed it was bad.
It has rained the last three years, so.
It's kind of like the state fair.
That Sunday was beautiful, Sunday.
All right, Ms. Smith?
More of the same. I mean, uh, kudos to everybody that pulled off events this past month, including the John Jackson Festival. Uh, again, a rainy day, but well-attended and enjoyed by everyone who attended. And Reynolds Memorial celebrated their hundredth anniversary yesterday and Saturday. So it's just been a beautiful, beautiful year for the county. And um, so gratifying to see all the organizations and individuals working hard for our tourists and for the people that live here.
Sure, Mr. Whitson?
And I think I mentioned earlier, uh, my son and I did walk, we did not run. We walked the, uh, the new version of the Jingle Bell Run, which is now a Halloween-themed run.
Yep.
And um, I know Debbie's uh, dear, dear friend, um, and her teen Amber did a awesome job really organizing it. And I had the pleasure of walking with Chairman Mills from the school board, who was dressed as a character from the perennial favorite film, Sandlot. And he was carrying a baseball bat, so I stayed away from uh, any budget discussions during the five K walk. But it was nice to spend time with him.
Beautiful day for it.
Yeah, it was really a well-executed event.
I, I wanted to ask about the well. Nothing from DQ yet?
Uh, yeah, uh, he has been um, measuring it um, manually. And uh, he did give me an update that um, there was some delay, but it was back on the schedule to be topped off with the radio thing. Or maybe it's done. It may be done.
Interesting, okay.
I'll try to dig back and find that and.
It's interesting to see.
We bought the, we'll look at the top of it, see if it looks like there's Gator Tree on it.
Gator Tree, okay.
On the same as others, Rapid Home had the senior event at Reynolds Church. And it was packed. I was so impressed. I mean, there were tons of people. And then on the way out, people were eating their ice cream from the Yukon truck and enjoying themselves. So that was great. CCLC had their open house. That was really nice to see the yurts in action. What a great environment for young people. And um, still, I think they said a hundred and forty students or a hundred and forty-three. So we'll be seeing some influx over the next few years into the school system, which is great. I went to the play and saw our students playing music. And Patsy Cline and someone that used to work for me played the other um, position. And it was really well-done. I thought it was a lot of fun and people enjoyed the music. So um, the theater's, I think, doing a great job. October twenty-fifth is the fish fry at the Flint Hill Fire Department from four to seven. Settles is doing the fishing again for us, Gary and his son Lee. And then October thirty-first, I know of two trunk or treats. One is in Chester Gap and one is at the Baptist Church in Flint Hill. No, Methodist Church in Flint Hill. So lots of candy given out on those few days. All right.
I forgot one event.
Yep.
Shame on me. Um, I did attend the Scrabble School Scholarship um, event. And uh, that was really, really cool. I can't, it was more than a week ago, so it took me a while to remember it. But um, yeah, I, great music, great food, um, really compelling speakers and a lot of audience participation, which was interesting.
Cool.
Yeah, but that was a really lovely, lovely event.
Glad you made it.
Yeah, it was neat.
All right, recess until seven?
All right, that's good.
Thanks, everybody.
Nice, nice.